Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners Call Meeting, 4:00 PM, Tuesday, March 18, 2025. Henry County Code of Conduct During Public Meetings, Section 2.2-128. Stephanie, do you have a copy of that? Can you read it?
Section 2, 2128, Conduct During Public Meetings. During the public portion of the public meetings and public hearings, members of the Board of Commissioners shall not speak without first being recognized by the Chair, interrupt anyone who has the floor, use profanity during the public meeting, refuse to yield the floor or to argue with the Chair if he or she ruled out of order by the Chair, make disparaging remarks about another's character during the public portion of any meeting, represent their personal opinion and beliefs as the position of the Board as a whole, refuse to recognize the validity of the actions approved by a majority vote of the Board, and lastly, divulge the subject matter of any confidential matter, legal advice, legal strategy, or content of discussions held during executive session.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Good afternoon. I would like to begin today's meeting with transparency by sharing my personal stance regarding the rezoning requests for GOSAM development. I want to be clear that I, Chair Carlotta Horell, have no personal interest in this matter and will not benefit from the approval or denial of this application. Our purpose to date is to carefully consider the facts presented in the proposed rezoning application, which was reviewed by the Zoning Advisory Board on January 9, 2025. Our responsibility as a Board is to gather information, deliberate thoughtfully, and make informed decisions. As Chair, I am committed to ensuring that this Board upholds the highest standard of integrity and impartiality. Our process is designed to provide all citizens with the opportunity to be heard. Every applicant is entitled to present their case in a respectful environment, and we will ensure that voices from both sides, those in support and those that oppose, are given fair consideration. Our ultimate priority remains fostering a vibrant, innovative, connected, and exceptional community. Commissioner Price, you requested to make a comment.
Yes. With this particular development, I received support during my campaign, so to dispel any appearance of anything that is unethical, I recuse myself from any discussions or decisions or votes concerning this development.
Any other comments from the Board?
I have a comment, so if that's the case, I think it would be fair for any other Commissioner that had received any campaign contributions from this organization to recuse themselves as well.
County Attorney, can you read what our Charter says?
Yes, Senator. Per ordinance, the ethics ordinance, the conflict of interest, a county official may not participate in a vote or a decision on a matter affecting the official personally, an immediate family member, or any person, entity, or property in which the official has a substantial interest. And in our code, substantial interest means a substantial financial interest.
So that does not include campaign contributions?
Per our code, it states that any substantial interest can be whether a direct benefit is reached by you or your family, any person or their family members, whether a person has a contractual relationship that receives any payment or benefit, including employment, whether the entity or the official member has immediate family members that are shareholders, as well as whether there's an immediate family member or the official is a creditor, debtor, or grantor of any person who's applying for any action from the Commission.
Thank you. So I'd like to ask for Henry County, this is, this planning and zoning item, ULDC AM-24-03, is a public hearing. Kamal, are you going to be presenting this case today?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, and citizens of Henry County. Today, we are reviewing the Unified Land Development Code Amendment Proposal presented alongside the rezoning request for the Grove Master Development. This ULDC amendment applies countywide and focuses on procedures related to development agreements. The applicant, Henry County Land Company, is seeking amendments to the ULDC to enable the Grove Master Development to proceed. Currently, the proposed uses for the Grove are not allowed under existing ULDC, and to address this, the following changes are being proposed. Number one, permitted uses in mixed-use zoning districts. This amendment would add a new permitted use to the MU zoning district. This allows uses specific to the Grove or other development agreements to be approved through zoning decisions by the Board of Commissioners. And number two, development agreements in resource protection areas. This proposal removes a section of the ULDC that currently prohibits development agreements in areas designated for resource protection. Specifically, portions of the Grove located within the Shoal Creek watershed protection district, including areas with water quality critical boundaries, that would qualify for development agreements. There are also a few minor changes in the ULDC regarding the development agreements, and that's all in the Red Line document, but the two biggest changes are what you see on the screen. So broadly, the Grove Master Development Plan Project involves three different zoning procedures. The first is the Unified Land Development Code, which basically allows development agreements within resource protection areas. Number two is RZ2427, rezoning the property from RA, R3, RM, C2, and C3 to one zoning district of mixed use. And number three, a development agreement. And due to the scale of the development, the applicant is proposing a 40-year development agreement, and this agreement would take precedent over existing ULDC and govern development specifics. While this request would best be handled through a development agreement, it is important to note that someone could still develop the property with a simple rezoning that doesn't include a development agreement. However, in that case, the developer would be held to the standards within our current ULDC, which does not offer much flexibility or creativity and is outdated for current-day planning standards. The development agreement allows for a more tailored approach that fits scale and vision of the Grove, offering more flexibility for both the applicant and the county. Additionally, these changes do not take away any authority from either the Clayton County or Henry County Water Authorities, and both Water Authorities retain their rights and responsibilities. It's also worth mentioning that Lake Talmage is the only reservoir in the county that is owned by Clayton County. This makes it unique as it is also only, the only reservoir that has a higher density allowance per the future land use map. The higher density allowance is important as it aligns with the goals of the proposed mixed-use development for the Grove. Additionally, the Tussehaugh or Watermark Plant Development, which was rezoned in 2006, is the only other reservoir in Henry County that has a planned development or mixed-use zoning entitlement. These changes are essential for the development of the Grove and its master plan as presented by the applicant, and the development includes a mix of residential, commercial, and civic spaces, and the ULDC amendments are necessary to facilitate specific land uses. Staff also notes that the proposed amendments align with future recommendations for the ULDC rewrite, which is expected to be finalized by the end of summer 2025. Based on evaluation, staff recommends approval of the proposed amendments to the ULDC as outlined in ULDC AM2403 report, and also in your exhibit books in the Red Line. And the specific sections to be amended include Section 2.03.02, Residential Land Uses in Base Zoning Districts, Section 2.3.3, Non-Residential Land Uses in Base Zoning Districts, Section 2.03.04, Accessory Land Uses in Base Zoning Districts, and Section 12.02.14, Requirements for Development Agreements. I know it's a little hard to see, but this is the recommendation red lines, and they're also in your exhibit books. This page specifically is for the use sections. It's adding a new line to our use charts that basically says MU allows uses that are approved within a development agreement. That's all this says. And then Chapter 12, it just details the big changes that you can do a development agreement in resource protected areas. Again, these changes are likely what staff would be suggesting as well in our ULDC update. So with that being said, that concludes my presentation for the ULDC specific, and more details will, will come around for the rezoning.
Okay, we'll reserve questions toward, for the end, at the end. Stephanie, can you start the clock? Okay, so this is a public hearing. Persons wish to speak in favor of the request will have a collective total of 10 minutes to address the Board. Those in opposition of the request will have likewise a collective total of 10 minutes. So we'll begin with those that's willing, that's wanting to speak in favor.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. My name is Patrick Brooks. I'm the Vice President of GOSAM Capital, the applicant, 2170 Satellite Boulevard, Suite 425, Duluth, Georgia, 30097. I want to first start, I want to first start by introducing a few key members of our team. I have John Palmer, President of Falcon Design, Lead Engineer, Stephen Jones, Partner at Taylor English, Lead Counsel, Dr. Brian Wellington, our Water Quality Expert for the project. I think Kamal hit the head, hit the nail on the head with the importance of a master plan community being governed by a development agreement. They provide protections and guidelines to ensure the quality of development is preserved over the life cycle of the development. We've also gone above and beyond the standards that are in your existing ULDC after working with all of these departments, and then also going through the DRI state-run process through, with DCA, ARC, Georgia DOT, and Greta. The agreement that was in front of you was crafted by all the departments listed on this screen. Some of the major highlights of this agreement are as follows. We met with both General Managers of the Henry County Water Authority and Clayton County Water Authority, as law, as well as members of the Planning and Zoning Department for Henry County on February 24th, to discuss the development agreement in detail. At this meeting, I cleared up any misconceptions on buffers and setbacks that are required to again reiterate that we are respecting all state and all Clayton County buffers and setbacks on Clayton County Water Authority's reservoir. This is in stone in this development agreement. We also clarified the language stating that we will have to reach a separate agreement with whatever authority handles utility servicing for this project. It's my understanding that Henry County Water Authority has voted to give up their service area. Fire life safety. We are deeding seven acres to the county for a combined fire and police station. We have agreed to sprinkle all townhome units and a block of six or more units at fires' request. Also at fires' request, we have moved our plans for the age-restricted component towards the front of the development. We will be setting flock cameras at the major intersections points in the neighborhood at the request of the Police Department. We're also mandating that all homes be built with the ability to have digital cameras, i.e. ring doorbells, that can be hooked up to the Henry County system at the request of the Police Department. On traffic, our DRI was completed in conjunction with the DCA, Department of Community Affairs, Greta, Georgia Regional Transportation Authority, and GDOT, Georgia Department of Transportation. Local municipalities, including Henry, Clayton, and Fayette Counties, as well as the cities of Hampton, Lovejoy, and Jonesboro, were all included in this state-run process. Road improvements were set by Georgia DOT with input from local municipalities and are a private investment. We have met with members of the adjacent community, the Lake Talmage subdivision, and shown them our plan to address access onto Highway 1941. School capacity. We've made sure to include education as a use in our development agreement in case it makes sense in the future for the school system to locate an elementary school within the Grove. In our meetings with the school system, they have asked us to donate land. We are currently going through the process, reviewing our environmental report, to ensure that we can give land. I just confirmed at a recent meeting that, oh, I'm sorry, we also met with private schools in the area to discuss allowing bus routes to this area to provide another education Rental units. We will have a minimum of 80% of the single-family homes for sale as for-sale product through a rental restriction. We've worked with staff to allow cluster homes to be built within the multi-family section that can be sold fee-simple to promote homeownership. Other uses we are considering are condo and assisted living, independent living within the multi-family section. Density and unit count. Timeline for this project is 40 years. Again, this is written into our development agreement, so the promises I make today in 2025 can't be undone in 2045, 2055, 2065. And also, this allows for us to have a smart and phased approach to the development. All of our conversations and all of these items that I've listed before you today and the last three years have led us to the project that I'm proud to announce, the Grove. At GOSAM Capital, we believe in corporate responsibility, and we take the approach of listening to communities and stakeholders in the areas we develop. Our company has gone to great lengths to ensure the Grove is heavily influenced by Henry County ideals and values while being creative and fostering a new era of smart and phased development. We attended the 2024 Special Call Henry County BOC meeting that talked about the vision for this county. Stated goals were increases in medical, preservation of green space, hotel with conference space, commercial versatility, increased public safety, attainable/workforce housing. Our plan offers all of these options and more. We have doubled the required amount of green space at over 150 acres. And as a company, something that we look to do is preserve natural beauty when we can. We have met with the CEO of Piedmont Health to discuss our site, and we are looking forward to future discussions with their real estate team. I actually have a meeting set up on April 9th, depending the outcome of today. We plan to offer a full-service hotel. As you can see, we take the route of listening to stakeholders when planning our projects. I'll reserve the remainder of my time to answer questions.
Okay, Stephanie, can you restart the clock? Okay, if there is anyone willing to speak in opposition, if anyone that lives in this particular area that is going to be impacted, I would like for them to have the opportunity to speak first. Please come up and state your name and your address.
Good afternoon. My name's Carlton Grant. I live on 30 North Tribe, and I'll be directly impacted by this development and many others in that subdivision called Lake Talmage. I'm not in favor of rezoning the subject property located on Highway 1941, north of, north of Highway 81, west on land lots 161, 162, 163, 189, 190, 191, 192, 194, 195, 196, of Henry County, Georgia. If the rezoning is approved, it would severely impact the Shoal Creek watershed in a negative way. The watershed's water quality would be severely affected, severely affected and aggravated by stormwater runoff. In the last rezoning meeting held on 1/9/25, the Speaker for Henry County Land Company, LLC of Duluth, Georgia, was very vague on how stormwater management will be implemented to protect the watershed. The Speaker said that stormwater retention ponds will be built on the proposed development to hold and contain the stormwater. Also, the Speaker mentioned that coagulants would be used to aid in improvement turbidity and contaminants from the stormwater. Are they planning to build a stormwater treatment plant in development to treat the stormwater? No, I don't believe they will build a treatment plant and have it staffed by state and Georgia-certified plant operators. I have, furthermore, I have a Georgia Class 1 water purification and wastewater treatment licenses with 30 years of experience. Also have extensive knowledge in stormwater treatment and management. My licenses are the highest attainable in the state of Georgia in water and wastewater treatment, so I'm well qualified to tell the Board my thoughts about stormwater and how it negatively affects a watershed. The stormwater treatment ponds aren't significant, significant, sufficient enough to hold and contain the millions of gallons of stormwater generated by significant rainfall. Also, using coagulants to settle out turbidity would generate wastewater sludges that contain sand, silt, dirt, and other contaminants of major concerns to water quality. Some of the waste sludge would settle to the bottom of the retention ponds while the remainder could flow out of the ponds when they are full of water, stormwater. Most water treatment plants in Georgia are conventional water plants. They aren't designed to remove many contaminants in stormwater. Stormwater can contain volatile organic chemicals, inorganic chemicals, plastics, pesticides, herbicides, oils, grease, nitrogen, phosphorus, PFAs, animal waste, bacteria, gerardia, and cryptosporidium. Conventional water treatment plants would require major capital improvements to be able to remove a lot of the contaminants in stormwater. Also, the stormwater retention ponds would be breeding grounds, breeding grounds for large populations, mosquitoes and diseases, diseases they can transmit to humans. Moreover, the Speaker of Henry County Land Management LLC of Duluth couldn't even get the pronouns correct to differentiate between Lake Talmage and Shoal Creek Reservoir. They're two different bodies of water. That he mentioned on January 9, 2025. Lake Talmage and Shoal Creek Reservoir are not one of the same. Those are two bodies of water separated by an earthen dam. Also, they are mentioned in an emergency exit for the citizens who would live on the proposed development. The Speaker stated that the emergency exit would, would be built on Circle Drive in Lake Talmage subdivision. Circle Drive doesn't even butt up to the proposed development. I believe they are planning to use North Drive as an emergency exit instead. North Drive is a very narrow road. Presently, it's very difficult for even the mailman, school bus, garbage man, and citizens of Lake Talmage to pass one another on such a narrow road. Also, Lake Talmage Dam is an earthen dam with a narrow one-lane road. It wasn't designed to accommodate large amounts of cars and traffic to cross over the dam from an emergency exit. The citizens of Lake Talmage would fight the land developers tooth and nail in a court of law to stop the emergency exit in the Lake Talmage subdivision, period. Moreover, Henry County sent out survey, surveyors to North Drive and Lake Talmage to assess what may be stormwater piping installation work. The survey stakes are very close to septic tank drain fields in our front yards where the stormwater pipe would be laid. This could negatively affect our septic tank drain fields in a big way, and could possibly cause septic tank sewage to get into the stormwater and cause cesspools in our front yards. Finally, it is absolutely unacceptable to build a development in the middle of a watershed. Even if all the homes were, were built on one-acre lots, it would still mean building over 1,200 homes, which would still greatly affect the watershed. Also, Lake Talmage subdivision will be affected the most by this development. Lake Talmage will bear the brunt, the most from the stormwater runoff. It would fill the lake up with more sediment and contaminants, causing great harm to the aquatic environment that live in, in the lake. Also, Lake Talmage is composed of mostly elderly retired citizens that wouldn't have the financial means to dredge the lake and remove large amounts of sediment. Dredging a body of water is a very expensive process to undertake. So I asked the zoning board, so I asked the zoning advisory board and the Board of Commissioners, is it more important to save a watershed and its water quality and restore it by allowing this misguided development to move forward? One of the biggest obstacles mankind faces in the 21st century is the availability of good water resources to provide water for agriculture and propagation, recreational purposes, and drinking water for our citizens. It is imperative that we be good stewards of our non-infinite, non-infinite water supply means. Acting responsibly to protect and sustainably manage our resources, ensuring they are available for, for future generations while benefiting people and the environment. There are many other places to add more development in Henry County, such as I-75, Georgia 20, I-75, Jonesboro Road, I-75, and Jolicoa Road, and Tanger Outland I-75, that aren't located within a watershed environment. Those areas would be much more suitable for future development. If Henry County Land Company LLC wants to do the right thing, donate the land located in the District of Henry County, Georgia, then it could be forever a green zone with hiking trails in a small picnic area by Shoal Creek Reservoir to be enjoyed by the citizens of Henry County. Lastly, I have no confidence in Henry County Land Management, Land Company, LLC of Duluth, Georgia, to develop this property in a manner that would safeguard Shoal Creek watershed and Lake Talmage from a severe, severe environmental impact. In the last Henry County Zoning Advisory Board meeting held on 1/9/25, the Board seemed surprised by the photo that was shown on the overhead projector that showed a developed property that appeared to be clear-cut of all trees before the homes were built on the site. The Speaker showing the picture said they bought the development, but didn't offer any proof that was the case. Why would a land developer buy a property that's already been developed? What the Speaker said should have been a red, big red flag for the zoning and advisory board. The zoning advisory board doesn't have to go any further than Highway 1941 and Highway 81 west, west, to see what a typical clear-cut development looks like. Every tree standing on the site was cut down to the ground and all stumps removed. The board should go see what their actions mean when they approve a zoning moving forward. Hopefully, then you'll see for yourself what your vote did to the land and the environment. And furthermore, I went down 81 today to come to this meeting, and there's several other developments going on now. Everything's clear-cut. Go look for yourself.
Thank you. North Drive, North Drive. Thank you. The, the Speaker, if you go back over.
Thank you. That's all I need.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'll try to be brief. I'm very concerned with integrity and transparency from everybody involved in this particular development because it, my name is, by the way, Jean Kessinger. I live at 323 Rocky Creek Road, Hampton, Georgia, sorry. Because some of what needs to be done for this development feeds into my area big time. Henry County Water Authority had a meeting back in August of 2023, in which they said that the land could not sustain the building growth in that area and several other areas as well. The applicant had the barge company do a report for them, and that's where some of my information is, what I'm going to present to you tonight. The barge in September of 2024 last year did a water planning report in which they said both the ground and elevated storage tanks at Highway 81 do not have the capacity to accommodate the increased in demands, and the elevated storage tanks completely drains during peak hour demands. We know that because we get the sludgy water. Both pumping and storage will be needed by the 2025 year, which is 2050, planning horizon. A booster pump station is recommended to be installed near the intersection of Highway 20 and Hampton Locust Grove Road. Hello, that's where I live. Okay, so then I get to deal with the aftermath of that. A solid foundation for Henry's growth is mandatory, and we don't have it. We don't have a solid foundation. We keep changing stuff as we go along. I watched this happen in Clayton County for 20 some odd years. I finally got out of there. I left the crazies half at it. Unfortunately, some of the crazies have followed me over here, and it's like, what in the world is going on? We need a solid foundation. We need to make a plan, stick to it, and think about what we're going to allow. We need quality over quantity. We need to have a full and complete investigation into what the real truth is because there is a conflict. Some say, oh, we don't have any water problems. We do have water problems. I didn't do this. The applicant did it. That, that just substantiates what I'm telling you. We've got water problems. Not only our Henry County Water Board says we do, but an outside source says we do. Choose, I choose to believe there is substantial merit in the barge report and the Chairman of the Henry County Water Authority, Water Horn, Holder. Our elected officials have a duty to care for the health, safety, and wellness of its citizens. Applicant is putting the cart before the horse. Applicant is putting the cart before the horse. The infrastructure is not in place to handle this development and won't likely be for some time. We've already experienced the electrical increases in the water fees. They've already increased in anticipation of new growth, so we're already meeting that burden of new growth, and we're the existing citizens. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Okay. The time has run out on the public hearing. Stephanie, if you would just add five more minutes so that we can hear the last two.
Madam Chair, you will need to make a motion to extend the time, and then we'll do it on both sides.
Okay.
So the board will need to make a motion for the amount of time that you want to extend, and then that will be extended not only for those speaking in opposition, but for the applicant as well.
Okay.
Motion to extend five minutes.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor. Okay. Put five minutes on the clock, Stephanie. Thank you, Sheri.
First of all, I want to thank you guys for the extension in time. Given that this meeting was bumped up to four o'clock versus later in the evening, as you know, it was a challenge for most residents to get out here. With that being said, my name's Connie Snow, and I'm with Conserve Henry. For those of those who are opposed to this development, will you please stand? I'm speaking on behalf of everybody standing, along with the over two thousand signatures on the Conserve Henry petition. Given that this was denied on January ninth in planning and zoning, and given that this meeting was rushed through, we ask the county to delay approvals and hold a series of educational meetings to go over the details and the drawings and to allow Q and A session and to rally support from the community rather than making a decision on some renderings today. I'd also like to note that GeoSam, who's over this development, is essential in providing financial support for state-of-the-county events. They were listed as the transition team when Chair Harrell had came into office. There's actually an article on that, and they are listed on that transition team. So I do believe that there is some conflicts of interest going on with this property. Thank you.
Angie Collins, Crystal Light Golf and Country Club. Thank you again for extending the time. I attended the meeting for the initial presentation in January, so I was really coming here today expecting to hear some of the things that we're going to improve upon what was discussed previously, and that I didn't hear. I'm concerned about a couple of different issues that I jotted down, and water and sewage seems to be a big issue, and I can understand, especially the people that are closest to that. It wasn't clear to me if they are going to be paying for everything in order to make this property suitable for the residents around it. I didn't, it seemed as though before we left, were the taxpayers paying that, and I didn't think that was fair, so I think if they want to develop this property, they definitely should be the ones that are taking care of any expenses that wouldn't be incurred as a result of developing the property not to harm the surrounding communities. Also, one of the things that was concerning was if this were to be approved, the type of developers that they were, Henry County is growing, it's changing, and the caliber of individuals that are moving in are those that are expecting a higher level of homes. Initially, when we spoke in January, they said that they hadn't finalized anything, but before anything is finalized, if this were to pass with the water and all the other corrections that need to be prepared, that they do have some developers that have the intentions of variation, some kind of nicer homes, that would be nice to add value to the area. In addition to that, some of the things that we discussed was maybe they might even add a hospital. So is, I didn't hear anything about a hospital, hospital being added. It would be nice if we could get confirmation because, as you know, once they get the confirmation they need, they do what they want to do. So hospitals, schools with twelve-hundred-plus acres, that's a lot of new bodies that could potentially be in Henry County. So I didn't hear any specifics, so with that, I would be reluctant to say, "Let's approve this." Thank you for your time.
I have a minute and fifty seconds.
Hey, my name is Brenda Martin. I represent over ten-and-a-half thousand petitioners, one point two thousand active members of a community committed to protecting the Tawalaga watershed. The High Falls-Tawalaga Watershed Alliance is a nonprofit organization started in two thousand four. The Grove development will have a direct impact that begins along the headwaters of the Tawalaga River, but that will impact, that impact will continue for over fifty miles all the way to Juliet, Georgia, where it joins the Ocmolgi River. According to a recent estimate by the Nature Conservancy, for every inch of rainfall, a single acre of impervious surface can create twenty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty gallons of runoff. It's estimated that the rapid growth in Henry County, just in the area between Highway one fifty-five and Locust Grove, has converted over fifteen thousand acres of agriculture and wooded areas into impervious surfaces. This equates to over four hundred and seven million gallons of stormwater that can easily overwhelm all well-intended efforts to build systems to contain and control it. Unpaved ground absorbs rainfall, allowing water to soak naturally into the soil where it is filtered of pollutants and gradually makes its way to aquifers. Paved surfaces disrupt this process, altering natural drainage patterns, leading to increased volume and speed of surface runoff, diminished groundwater recharge, and rapid and intense stream flow during periods of heavy rain, causing erosion and more frequent and severe flooding. As part of our mission, we have been certified with the State of Georgia's Adopt a Stream Program to test both chemical and biological contaminants. We have already started testing at Tressel Road below Cole Dam, and will be adding additional sites in Henry Spalding and Butts Counties. In nineteen ninety-four, approximately twenty-eight inches of rainfall in this region within a few days. The High Falls Dam failed. As a result, a man lost his life when his truck was washed off the Highway eighty-three Bridge near Juliet, over ten miles below the dam. This development is approximately thirteen miles north of a dam built in eighteen ninety. We cannot stress enough our concern, as well as our desire to work with you to minimize the impact of this development on our watershed, especially the increased flood risk on the citizens downstream. Just think how close Hurricane Helene came to impacting our community. So with that in mind, please think about our watershed and the potential severe consequences of your decision. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak about our concerns.
Did GeoSam want to come back and take an additional five minutes?
I'm just going to hit on a couple high points real quick that were just made, then I'm going to bring up my water quality expert, Dr. Brian Wellington. There is no conflict of interest. I want to go back to what I said about corporate responsibility and wanting to be good neighbors in the communities we develop. We were also the diamond-level sponsor for the Fourth of July event last year, platinum-level sponsors for Trunk or Treat, platinum-level sponsors for the Christmas event last year. I handed out gifts to needy kids in Henry County personally last year. I think that's a vital financial resource as well. So we don't appreciate and we won't stand for any suggestions of conflicts of interest. On the medical, I did make mention of that in my speech. You know, we have to have a project, so today depends if we will be meeting with their real estate team. And then on the Lake Talmadge President, you know, we sent out mailers to the subdivision. We had multiple community meetings right down the street at Atlanta Motor Speedway. I met with multiple members of the community, have been speaking to them, been speaking with their HOA board, sending out emails, keeping them up to date on everything. So just for transparency that we're all talking about today, that has been occurring. So, Doctor.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and Vice Chair. My name is Dr. Brian Wellington, address is thirteen forty-nine West Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia. I just talk briefly about the water quality. I know that that's an important topic for everybody here today, and one of the things, I've worked in this area for a pretty long time, over twenty-plus years, and in terms of the water quality impacts that should be expected, as we all know, as we should know, water quality will be controlled on the site by the, by means of what are called best management practices. The Georgia EPD has a manual out that has prescribed controls that should be used for development sites. GeoSam has not only, is not only willing to apply those best management practices, but they're also willing to go above and beyond those practices to use the best available technology. For instance, there are things that we use that would actually allow those water to be controlled on the site. Somebody mentioned runoff into the streams, where we have systems that allow the water to be infiltrated into the, into the ground, and whilst doing that, remove any pollutants or sediments from the water before it even, before it enters the reservoir. In that way, it will control the water quality. We also have water quality plans for post-development where we'd have things like commercial controls like crystal streams, which basically are systems that capture all the silt and grit before they get into the, into the stream channel themselves, in that way controlling the water quality. Somebody mentioned coagulants. Yes, we will be using coagulants. The coagulants basically are going to be used to create clumps of sediment that would drop within the water, the detention basins. They will not leave the site because they're heavy, and that's what the coagulants will be used for. So I think that we will be designing systems that will be protective of the water quality of the reservoir and areas downstream. Thank you.
And just one more thing to mention about water quality. Again, this owner of this reservoir is the Clayton County Water Authority. We actively discussed this project with them. They're more than likely going to be the utility provider for this project. They're not here to speak against us today because of the transparency of us working with them, respecting their buffers, and they have every right to be here, and they're not here today to fight against this zoning. So I think that speaks to our honesty and our transparency when we work on projects as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Lewis, this is in your district, so.
Yeah, so right now, we're just addressing the ULDC.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah. So just one thing I like about this, this amendment to the code is, and I just want to explain it to the public, so we're doing this ULDC amendment so that we can actually have a development agreement. We're doing this because we need to do this prior to the ULDC update. So our ULDC right now is in the process of being updated. So we want extra protection prior to the ULDC being updated, so that's what this is about. So, you know, I just want that, make that clarification. So last year, the board voted to do a ULDC update for a number of reasons. One, to give us greater protections as citizens. Number two, to give us more creativity as far as the types of development we allow in the county. A lot of our ordinances haven't been updated since two thousand and nine, and then there are a lot more that are on the books that are probably about fifty or sixty years old, so they don't really match the type of developments that we have going on in the county and basically in the entire metro region. So with that, I do move that we approve, and just to let you know, this is just for the ULDC amendment. There will be another presentation, and I know, I know Ms. Collins, some of your questions will be answered in the second part of the presentation. This, this portion is just for the ULDC amendment, and I do move to approve the amendment.
Okay, so you've got a motion to approve the ULDC amendment. Okay. Is there a second?
Second, the ULDC.
Okay, so this is just the ULDC amendment, so we've got a first and a second. Are there any questions from the board?
I do have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson.
So the change in the ULDC for this, is it benefiting the county and the citizens, or is it benefiting the developer?
Okay, one thing that we're not going to have is outburst in here. I will have you removed, okay? We're going to be civil and respectful to one another. You've had the opportunity to speak, so let us run the meeting with respect, okay?
And the reason I ask this, because there's a development coming close to the Tuscaloosa Reservoir that could be affected by this change. So I want to make sure if we change in the ULDC, is to tighten the restrictions of around the reservoir, not given, given more areas to where developers can take advantage of it?
Yes, sir. So to answer your question, I think it benefits both. The original ULDC amendment they brought us was, had way more changes. This is actually staff's version of the ULDC that they brought to us. They wanted to scratch a lot more things out of the ULDC, and staff worked with the developer to get a plan that was a little more equitable for everyone. Now, as far as what this does, and I'll reiterate what I said before in my, in my speech, they can rezon this property without the development agreement. They may not get all, all of that, what they want, but what they will likely, you know, what they could get is a rezoning that we've done a million times over. So having this development agreement, being able to go into resource protection areas, just gives staff and the county a little more creativity and flexibility when it comes to their development agreement, which has more teeth than our ordinance right now.
So with our ULDC around the Clayton County Reservoir, how does that work?
So, and we'll dig into this a little bit during the rezoning portion, but the Clayton County Water Authority and the Henry County Water Authority, when we had a meeting with them, we assured them and made edits to the development agreement that we'll talk about, that they have to go and do their own development agreement and service agreement with both of those entities that has nothing to do with what planning and zoning is doing. This is just a way to facilitate a development agreement so that we can do a more holistic project, and frankly, zoning is just in the way right now. It still has to go to both of those boards for approval.
So with this ULDC change, it could affect every reservoir which is in District One. It could affect any development, big development around those, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay, that's what, that's all I have.
Good morning, Board. Commissioner Robinson.
Two minutes, I apologize. So basically, by doing so, you're saying this will protect for future, any development in this location?
Well, yes. So it gives the board authority to go into a development agreement, which can give you more teeth and more flexibility. That's all this does. Did that answer your question?
Yes, because I just want to clarify, any development?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions? Here are none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Those that oppose, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is RZ twenty-four dash twenty-seven. This is a public hearing.
Good evening, gentlemen. Sorry, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, and Citizens of Henry County. Now, we're going to discuss the rezoning request for the Grove Development submitted by Henry County Land Company LLC of Duluth, Georgia. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural, R3 Single Family Residential, RM Multi-Family Residential, C2 General Commercial, and C3 Highway Commercial to one single zoning mixed use for approximately one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven point six-two plus or minus acres located on Highway nineteen forty-one north, north of Highway eighty-one west. You'll see the property on the overhead, and it's north of the Lake Talmadge, right at the county, Clayton County, Henry County border. The proposed development, I'm sorry, there's some zoning history with the development. It's a bit complicated. Currently, the property is zoned RA, R3, RM, C2, and C3. Back in two thousand seventeen, part of the property was rezoned for the Talmadge Farms development, which included both residential and commercial uses. In addition, the twenty forty comprehensive plan initially designated the property as rural residential, but this was updated as a part of the mega-site project for a higher-density mixed-use development of sixteen units to the acre net. This again was updated in the twenty forty-five comprehensive plan at staff's request to lower the density from sixteen units to the acre down to eight units to the acre. The proposed development is aligned with the low-density mixed-use future land use map designation. The development is planned with a residential density of five point six units per acre gross, and they will not be able to exceed a residential density of eight units to the acre net, which is the maximum for the low-density mixed-use future land use designation. The Grove is being presented as a master plan development and will include, as proposed, thirty-four hundred single-family units, thirty-seven hundred 3,400 single-family units, 3,700 multifamily units, 2 million-plus square feet of commercial space, a mixed-use village, a 180-room hotel, 150 acres of open space, seven acres of civic use, eight miles of trails, 35 parks, six amenity areas, et cetera. Again, there are three key zoning procedures involved with this. The Unified Land Development Code, which you just voted to approve, which adjusts the zoning code to allow development agreements in resource protected areas, a rezoning, which we're hearing now, which requests a rezoning from the current zoning to mixed use, and a development agreement which will detail the conditions of the zoning, a 40-year development agreement. The applicant has conducted extensive studies on water and sewer infrastructure in coordination with both Henry County and Clayton County Water Authorities. These studies, along with the proposed improvements, will ensure adequate water and wastewater services for the development. On the morning of February 24th, a meeting was held with Clayton County and Henry County Water Authorities, along with planning and zoning staff and the applicant. During that meeting, it was determined that separate development and service agreements would be necessary to develop with both authorities once the zoning entitlement, if it is approved. Additionally, it was decided to adjust the development agreement, excuse me, to make it clear that the Board of Commissioners agreement does not take away any rights from either water authority. The issue at hand is zoning entitlement, which is currently the barrier to moving the project forward. The development was also reviewed as a development of regional impact, or DRI, by the Atlanta Regional Commission, and the traffic impact study has been completed to determine the necessary road improvements to support this project, which would be funded and built by the developer. The development is also projected to estimate over 5,000 new students at full potential build-out over a 40-year span. Discussions are ongoing with the Henry County Board of Education regarding the potential for a new school, school district or schools, and the development as existing schools serving the area will likely need additional classrooms to accommodate the growth. The applicant has worked closely with various departments, including Fire, Police, the Department of Transportation, GDOT, and Henry County DLT, Parks and Recreation, Stormwater Management, the county attorneys, and more to address all potential impacts. Their feedback has been incorporated into the development agreement. Additionally, any development standards, regulations, and details not explicitly stated in the agreement will be subject to enforcement under applicable county and state codes as they evolve. Staff did send out requests for feedback from all commissioners prior to this meeting, and all questions were answered and input was received for those that responded. Staff acknowledges that while the development agreement has been meticulously worked on since late 2022, it is likely that some further changes may be necessary based on feedback from the board tonight, and feedback and requests from the board tonight. At the January 9th zoning advisory board meeting, the zoning advisory board did recommend denial of the ULDC, of the rezoning request. Based on extensive input and comprehensive planning involved in its proposal, staff recommends approval of the rezoning request, subject to the conditions outlined in the regional master plan development agreement for the Grove. As this agreement is currently in draft form, it will require further review and final approval by the Board of, by the Board before execution. Any additional conditions or decisions made tonight will be incorporated in, to the updated development agreement for future consideration, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a public hearing. Those wishing to speak in favor of the request have a collective total of 10 minutes.
Good afternoon again, Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. I'm Patrick Brooks, 2170 Satellite Boulevard, Duluth, Georgia. One thing, before I jump back into the slideshow here, is, you know, this ULDC is county-wide, but this, again, as staff reported to you, this reservoir is owned by Clayton County Water Authority, and any other development or developer would have to go through this process with staff, with the Board of Commissioners, and I can tell them, it's, it's not like it's some walk in the park or easy to get done, right? They have to come do this process. It's not a rubber stamp by any means. Our vision for the Grove is simple and supported by a robust development. We want to provide a full lifecycle community that offers attainable housing from a resident's first home to their dream home. Encourage connectivity through our trail system, inactive and passive green space. Provide a village center that will become an entertainment hub for not just the Grove, but for all of Henry County. Invite commercial versatility and attract economic drivers/job creators, and continuously work with the county throughout our build-out timeline with a smart phased development to limit strain on existing infrastructure. When thinking about the financial impacts of a development, you must also think about the impact of a community. Land is a finite resource. A properly planned and phased mixed-use development helps a municipality obtain smart development and growth, helps them grow their tax base, and provide the community with desirable amenities. Our consultant KB Advisory Group has put together the projections of our economic impact at full build-out. As you can see, there are immediate and long-term impacts through fees, household spending increases, and future job creation. This type of development helps promote the halo effect, or lifting up the surrounding area for economic growth. This will pair well with the area, airport area master plan and the county's future A project of this size requires experience and persistence. With GSM, both qualities are in great supply. We have over 40 years of experience. We are family-owned and operated, and we've developed over 5,000 lots in Georgia across 90 communities. As Henry County loves its natural history, we believe in being good stewards of the land that we develop. Our project provides over double the required amount of green space for a minimum total of 150 acres. We have over six miles of undisturbed shoreline. We're going to provide 35 pocket parks that are connected by eight miles of trails to allow community to interact in the provided green space. The pocket parks and amenity areas will be done in conjunction with the Henry County Parks and Rec Master Plan and their standards and specifications for these amenity areas. We've been actively discussing our project with the Clayton County Water Authority, who owns the reservoir on our southern border. You've already met Dr. Brian Wellington. He was able to speak a little bit more in the first one, but just goes to show our commitment to nature goes even further. You know, he's going to be a part of our design, construction, and maintenance optimization throughout the development's lifetime. Well, as long as we can have him. We plan to use enhanced best management practices, as he discussed, and again, look to preserve natural areas of water quality. Our experience allows us to be a developer that can identify community needs and promote versatility. Our main goal is to bring in an economic driver to our state. As I said earlier, we're currently having medical discussions with Piedmont Health, depends on the outcome and the project being approved. Our residents on the west side of the county currently have to travel to either other counties or make their way towards the 75 corridor for retail and dining options. We plan to bring a multitude of options to the 1941 corridor. We are lucky to have an entertainment attraction such as Atlanta Motor Speedway so close to our development. We've had multiple meetings with their leadership and plan to continue to discuss with them on how to provide opportunities for residents at the Grove. Another thing our experience allows us is to be selective in who we allow to build in our communities. I think there was a comment earlier about who the developers are. We are the developer. It's just about when we just pick what builders we allow to build in our communities. Curating a community means to understand that the start is just important as the finish. We're setting up a master plan committee that will have a voting member appointed by Henry County to help ensure high quality is met. I'd like to walk you through a few renderings. With a projected 25- to 40-year build-out, we're comfortable that we're hitting the current architectural trends while also having the flexibility and creativity to follow consumer preferences and county preferences throughout the development's lifecycle. Here we have our village center. You can see the mixed-use elements coming together. With commercial, we made sure to increase our architectural standards so our commercial components stand out. Our multifamily section also displays versatility, as we plan to offer other choices besides three- and four-story buildings, as discussed earlier. We believe there's not enough age-restricted options in Henry County, and we look forward to helping serve this need. And again, we're setting a high standard in architectural design, but we are ready to adjust as necessary throughout the timeline. I'll observe the rest of my time.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Stephanie, restart the clock, please. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address.
My name is Tammy Barton. I reside at 330 South Drive at Lake Talmage, and I just want to highlight some of our concerns. I have attended the meetings that they've held with the community. They have been transparent. But as they said earlier, the, our lane, the streets in our neighborhood are very narrow. You cannot pass a school bus. We have to go into someone's yard when a school bus is coming. And when we sit there and we talk about the water, I understand all of that, but my main concern is about the Georgia DLT has rejected any further widening of 1941. We, and there's only one red light that's being added right now. I work in Atlanta, trying to get out of our subdivision already is a problem. You're going to add 7,000 more units. How many people per unit with all of those vehicles with only one red light? That needs to be addressed. When there's any issues with the lake, there was some development across the street. They did not do proper fencing, and we had issues with erosion, things coming into the lake. We, as the residents of the lake, had to pay, come in together, and pay to have riprap put at the dam to protect it, and it's, it's a major concern for us. Another thing that I have an issue that I'd like to address is that there's more rentals in this development than single-family residencies for them to be homeowners. I do not want additional apartment complexes. There's enough that's already been built on 1941 that's going across at 81 as well. I'd appreciate if y'all would really can, address the concerns for the traffic, because that is going to cause additional issues for us.
Hi, Connie Snow, 426 Chase Marion Way, and I'm with Concerned Henry. I'm going to bring up a couple of things. This is in a water-critical area. There is a barred water feasibility letter that is in this applicant's documents. It clearly defines that by doing this, it's going to cause grave damage to our water in regards to our capacity, drinking water, and storm water. The developer was asked to put in $11 million in infrastructure repairs for the sewer and water area, and it is my understanding, based on the minutes of that meeting, that they have to pay for it. That's what's usually normal required in Henry County. However, yet today, that developer has not even paid any of that. The only thing they have paid is the over $300,000 for the water feasibility study, which clearly states that by doing this, you're going to cause water pressure issues for us, you're going to end up causing our bills to go up higher, our water drinking water is going to be contaminated, we're going to have poor flow, and we're going to have a fire water safety risk. It's clearly stated in that document. Let's see, what else? Another thing I want to point out is that if we truly care about the citizens of this county, this meeting would have been scheduled at a time other than 4:00 PM, at the normal meeting times that we're used to. I feel like this, and I'm pretty sure everybody else will echo the same sentiment here, that by scheduling this at 4:00 PM, it feels like we're being tricked and duped, in the hopes that none of us would show up so this could be easily approved and passed. And one last thing is, I'm going to go back to what I said earlier. I urge you guys to table this, to give this more time, to have more discussions with the community, because while this developer spoke to people in the Lake Talmage area, he hasn't spoken to everybody in that area that's going to be impacted. And that's about it.
Dominique Jones, 416 Payne. I agree with Connie, doing this at 4 o'clock just seems a little, let me hug, wink everybody. But my question, as a parent who has a student in Henry County, are we thinking about the kids? We got 23 failing schools. I can go through my emails right now and show the amount of times that my daughter's bus has been late, getting her to school after 9 o'clock. So now, we're going to add this massive project, which brings other students, and Henry County cannot service properly the students that we have. Yet, I don't know if he is a parent, but to say that we're going to partner with private schools does nothing, because I don't know if he's seen the tuition for private schools. No matter the home prices, everybody may not be able to afford that. Adding one additional elementary school, how are the kids going to get to school? Henry County cannot get the kids to school that we already have. So now, we're going to add 1,000-plus more children to that? Please, don't, don't let this go through.
Hi, my name is Anne Fields. I'm 329 Chase Marion Way. I just wanted to make a comment about what Geo Sam was saying about bringing folks over to the I-75 corridor for shopping. As you know, exit 222 has been fully annexed to Stockbridge, and they're going to develop Patrick Henry Parkway, and they're also building the new highway on the other side of 75, so if you're parallel to the southbound. And there is an increased amount of traffic in our area now. So having a discussion, or set of discussions, day, evening, weekend discussions, to present this plan and have more community discussion and input surrounding something that is this large, I would highly encourage that, because there are a lot of people that are going to be impacted by a development, even if it is sitting in Hampton. And I'm very specifically thinking about the traffic on Jonesboro. It takes 20 minutes to go from the New Publix down to Sam's Club, sometimes longer. That's an awful long time to be sitting on Jonesboro Road in traffic at rush hour. We are the butt of jokes online now from comedians about Jonesboro Road traffic, and we're waiting for the infrastructure improvement. So there are some community concerns. We feel that you guys would benefit from hearing and weighing before you would vote this in.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Harrell and all the other commissioners. Thank you all for taking the time out for speaking to us. I'm Councilwoman Vanessa Thomas, City of McDonough at Large. Now, although I do not reside exactly where these homeowners are talking, I do reside in Henry County, and I do reside in District Five, and I do pay property taxes. My concern is that this is a very big undertaking that has come before you all. A 40-year project, a lot can happen within 40 years. That's just too much to have a project open for that long. And not only that, but from what I heard, that you all just updated your Comprehensive Plan this year, from 2025, from what I'm hearing, and for you to go in and, and want to start making changes already to that, to that Comprehensive Plan, that should not be allowable. You all should not want to, want to have to do that. Another thing is, I also heard that your Planning and Zoning Committee has denied this project. That's a big undertaking right there. For your planning and zoning to deny the project and for, for you all to consider still thinking about the project, that's a problem. Need to know why that project was denied by the Planning and Zoning Committee. And I have a concern about, just like one of the other residents mentioned, about who's paying for the project. Are we, as taxpayers, paying for this project? That's another concern. That's another concern. And another thing, you know, we talk about wanting to put these big projects up, you know, that's going on here, but are we looking at what is needed like now, such as supermarkets, some type of, some type of a grocery store within that Hampton area? That's something that is needed now and not 40 years or so from now? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
You have 30 seconds.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Uh, yes, I'm just going to make a quick comment. I'm in District 5. I'm on Oakland Road, and I just want to make this, this reminds me, in 1995, I was on the Planning and Zoning Board in 2002 and 2003, and we approved, we, we denied, excuse me, we denied the West Ridge, the Arbers, and the Ivies. You see all the problems that the board had, the Board of Commissioners, and y'all have done a wonderful job handling all these. However, we're still behind, and it's not the county's fault. It happens to be the state problem. Because they do not do what they say they're going to do. They do it 30 years later. We are now catching up to 2005, when that development developed into 500 homes. Now we're talking 7,000 homes. Give me a break. That we're not ready for that. However, I like the development. They need to look at it, downsize. Thank you very much.
That concludes public hearing. Commissioner Lewis, I'll turn it over to you.
All right.
But, but before I do, I, I do, can I ask a couple of questions? Could I have Geo Sam and maybe the water guy come back up? So I've heard a lot about who's paying for it. So I guess we're talking about water sewage, infrastructure within this development. So can you kind of give me a summary of what that looks like?
Yeah. So this is private investment, right? So you do the DRI. That's a state-run process. Either Georgia Regional Transportation Authority or GDOT, depending on who's the authority over the road system, sets out the improvements you have to make. In this case, widen a lane on 1941 up to Lovejoy Road, add in a lighted traffic intersection, add in R cuts, add in further median cuts. That is on us as the developer to pursue our project.
Okay, so hold up. So you're saying that your traffic impact study said that you had to widen, do an extra lane on 1941, traffic signals, and what else?
R cuts.
Okay. You have to pay for that infrastructure, not the taxpayers?
Private investment.
Okay. And then with regards to, uh, it was a lot of talk about storm water runoff, watershed, the impact that it would have. Can you talk a little bit about what you are going to do? Because there seems to be a great concern for Lake Talmage and the impact that it's going to have at Lake Talmage. So can you kind of talk a little bit about that? You did a water feasibility study, correct?
Definitely. So the feasibility study that keeps getting mentioned in this meeting is the barge feasibility study, and that was done by Henry County Water Authority. The Hazen and Sawyer Study was the one performed by Clayton County Water Authority, whose buffers and restrictions meet what we're showing on our plans. And all of our BNP's, I'll let Brian speak to it more, we're following what they do to protect their own reservoirs in their own county and their own watersheds. So that's what I'll say to that. And those improvements are also private investment.
And, and so, do you have a dollar amount yet of what that might look like?
Yeah, the feasibility study came back at $130 million for sewer, and then for water, it was 51. And Henry, Henry County Water Authorities aren't worth mentioning because they were too expensive, so.
Okay.
Did you, did you want him to clarify further on the BNP's?
Yeah, yeah, if he could clarify a little bit, because I'm, you know, I, I heard a couple of residents talk about Lake Talmage, and so what, what impact would the development have on Lake Talmage?
Okay, so they're talking about two different things, talking about storm water, which in terms, I believe, they might think about flooding or impacts to the dam itself. Well, when a development is done, you're required to do what is called a hydrology study, that basically takes your development, puts it in the watershed, and try to determine how the water from your site would change after development, and whether it would impact your, your dams or your reservoir. And if there's going to be an impact, you have to design controls on your property to protect the, um, the reservoir or the dam. And this will be done, and therefore, no, there will be no impacts to the lake that will be negative.
So, so what, what is the timeline on this development? Like, what are we looking at from, like, is this going to be done in phases, or?
Yes, ma'am. I want to say one more thing about Lake Talmage real quick, subdivision. The emergency access will be gated with a Knox Box gate. That's for emergency access only to use. It's not like an open access point. And then to your question about phases, yes, ma'am. Again, this is a 40-year timeline that's in the development agreement. This cannot and will not happen overnight. You know, we're looking, it's taken us three years to even get to this point on just the zoning part of it. We have plenty of more design, engineering, and permitting to do to even consider moving forward with construction. A lot of people talk about clearcutting. We can't go out there and clearcut 1,200, almost 1,300 acres at one time. It's not something we can do. State law prevents us from doing that. So that's what I'd say about phasing.
So, so in, in the, in the phase process of it, or the timeline of it, do you have, like, different phases that you're doing first as opposed to others, or?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, our, our current plan is to come in off the main boulevard, which will be the lighted intersection that was noted earlier, and come back to this age-restricted, active adult community right here, this first peninsula. So we're going to push out any effects to the school system further while we continue to work with the school system. We don't want to be a burden during that process. Uh, and then above it, we will, we will have some of the other residentials that will come after that. Our hopes are that at that point, we will have enough rooftops that we can attract the type of quality commercial components that we want to have in our project. So that's, that's a beautiful thing about us as a developer experience, is we can be patient. We don't have to rush people into this development. We can wait for the right commercial users.
So I just, I just want to make, so, so we're talking about 40 years, but we have a develop, we would have a development agreement in place, so none of us may not be here in 40 years. So, uh, you know, that keeps them to that development agreement, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Any standards that aren't in the development agreement itself will naturally evolve with current trends and current codes as, as they, you know, as they're approved.
Okay, all right. Okay. Commissioner Lewis?
You asked some more questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, no.
Taking notes.
Good questions.
Taking notes.
No, um, and if y'all could stand there, but I, I kind of want to go through the history of the project. And one thing I will say, I, I was actually surprised, Councilwoman Thomas, at, at some of your observations and questions. You, you do know by law that if it goes to the zoning advisory board, that we still have to hear it. So, and I know, I know y'all have the same process in the City of McDonough, so I was, I was actually kind of surprised that you, you brought that up. Also, you mentioned-
We talked about high density, all the high-density apartments y'all have right there at South Point.
Yeah.
And that y'all continue to approve.
That's, that's okay. Well, I'm, I'm not going to get into that part. But also, you, you did mention a groceries, you did mention a grocery store in Hampton, Ms. Thomas. And so Mayor Tarpley can tell you that we, we've had this discussion for over two years. And so part of the process of getting a grocery store in Hampton is, they, they need rooftops, and they need infrastructure. And so part of, part of the problem has been getting the infrastructure over to Hampton so that they can actually get a grocery store. So you actually have a developer right here who's going to deliver a grocery store. So, so I'm, I'm just, I was just a little quizzical about your line of questioning. But anyway, I, I'll continue. So one thing I want to kind of go through the history of this. So this, this project's been going on for about three years, actually since before I was a commissioner. I know as soon as I became a commissioner, kind of, kind of got, got into the tail end of the project, or actually in the, in the middle of the project. Originally, when this project was proposed, all of the infrastructure was going to be paid for by Henry County. And the water study, the feasibility study that you all are referencing, stated that the total cost, and I know you didn't want to mention the cost, but the cost was over $300 million, which was going to be borne by Henry County and the taxpayers. And through the length of this project, that's why I said absolutely not. I said the taxpayers will not pay for any of this project. If you guys want to, and I don't think Mr. Brooks was there at the time, they had another, another gentleman leading the project. I said if you guys want to pursue having a project, the taxpayers are not going to pay for any of the infrastructure. The infrastructure is going to be borne by the developer. We're, we're not in that business of financing private enterprise. That is not what we do. So I, I thought it important to mention that because I want to kind of go through the history of, of where this started. When we originally started, you know, one of the things that was important for us to include was to make sure that land was donated for fire and police. And most recently, we got into it, and you know, I know we've had discussion, is making sure that we identified, you know, resources for the school board and the Board of Education to make sure that we, we address schools. These are very important things that, that we have to talk about. One of the things I still have issue with, and I, and I, I am going to say ahead of time, I, I am going to, I have a vote for approval. However, I still have issue with the number of multifamily units in the project. And so, um, as part of my, my vote for approval, I want to make sure that we reduce the number of multifamily units by at least 1,000 units. Because I, I think that, that balances out a whack with the number of multifamily versus single-family detached. Also, I have an issue with the rental cap. The rental cap right now is 20%, which is a lot higher than what we usually do on development. Our standard of planning and zoning has been doing has been 10%. And, and I, and I am okay with 10% because I know with some of the things that we're trying to do as a county, especially along with the businesses that we're trying to recruit to the county, corporate rentals has been a big thing that they have asked for, you know. And then lastly, one thing I, I have to give credit, since Mr. Brooks has been on this project, he has been very communicative, very transparent, because I had a whole lot of issues with this project, of the life of the project, because I, I felt that the, the original project manager was trying to bully us into something that we didn't want. So I, I will have to give you kudos for actually being transparent and actually working, actually listening to, to what we were trying to, trying to do. And the last big piece, and that the, the piece that actually made me support this project over all that other stuff, is the commercial piece. Originally, the commercial piece was slated to be movie studios. That's what, that's what the applicant wanted. So probably about six months ago, I asked applicant, I said, hey, what we really need in Henry County is a new medical facility. That's what we need. Piedmont Henry is overburdened right now, and it's not of any fault of their own, it's just that Piedmont Henry is now servicing about five or six counties. It was built for Henry County, but now we're servicing Clayton County, DeKalb County, Butts County, Spalding County, Fulton County. All these people are coming to Piedmont Henry. So I said, to me, what the citizens are really, of Henry County really are in desperate need of is, is another medical facility. So I want to give you credit, because you reached out to the CEO of Piedmont Henry, and we have had preliminary talks already, and even to the point that if this project is approved, then Piedmont System is going to sit without, sit down with us to possibly try to bring another hospital to Henry County. That is huge. That is huge. There is, there is nothing else in the works in Henry County right now to bring another hospitals to this county. This is huge. Because right now, anybody, if you're coming from Locust Grove, if you're coming from the west side of Henry County, you have to cut across all this traffic to get over to Stockbridge, to go to Piedmont Henry, and then fight all the other ambulances. If you're ever at the hospital and you go look at the emergency room bay, you see all the ambulances, and only a few of them are actually from Henry County. They're from all the other counties that surround us. So to have a project, and like I said, this, this is, this is what really got me to the point where I would voted to approve of this project, was the, the possibility, and a very distinct possibility, that we can get a hospital out of this deal. So with that being said, I know that I will have some comments from some of my colleagues, and I, I will yield the floor to them. Matt Matur, I'll, I'll lead up to you.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, so things, when y'all submitted your application for rezoning, you submitted 550 some odd pages of documents. Within them documents, there's 25 pages of development agreement. County Manager, have you read through the development agreement?
I have not reviewed the entire development.
How about Iowa County Attorney? Have you reviewed this development agreement?
Yes, Commissioner, I saw it prior to County Attorney's vote.
Because I've got some, I've got some questions about it. There's, on page 14, there's a clause right there, item I. It says, "The Grove shall be exempt from the following design, development, and use standards." Then it lists a lot of standards, and one of those standards says, um, of the ULDC stream buffer protection. And it goes on to say that, uh, no buffers around any wetlands. You shall be, so it says, "There shall be no buffers around the wetlands." So this document right here needs to be reviewed by more than just the Board of Commissioners. There's a lot of language in this 25-page document that I think is going to give y'all a lot of leadway in a 40-year development. Now, that being said, another thing that concerns me is the, is the county services. Now, if you start this project, and there's, there's residents that live in this project, then there's a downfall. Our public safety, along with other county services, have to service that area. Who's paying for that? It will be our current taxpayers. We will be paying for the services rendered to this development till you're complete. You said it's going to take you 40 years. So within all of your documents you, you submitted, you also submitted campaign disclosure forms. So from 2022, then you, there was three commissioners that were mentioned, and there was 2024, and there was one commissioner, and are those updated?
Those were submitted before we made our campaign recommendations to Mission Price and obviously reviews.
So I'm saying they're not updated.
I wasn't asked to update them.
Okay, so they're not on your, they're not in your paperwork.
Sure.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of concerns about this master development agreement. What you can and can't do, and what you shall be exempt from. So this is something I think needs to be tabled till we can figure out everything that you're asking, and what you shouldn't get, and what you should get. Because 542 pages of documents, and we received this on Thursday? That's a lot of documents to go through. Now, some of them are just, some of them are just quoting codes and stuff, but-
Yeah.
-that's a lot of reviewing. And it takes a lot of, it takes a lot of time to go through and, and call out the things that we think that you're not eligible for. But I, I really think there's a lot of workshops that need to be done where we're exactly clear what we fixing to give you the ability to do in a development agreement. That's just my thoughts.
I can-
Go ahead.
Well, first of all, Commissioner Lewis, you do know that we're not voting on a development agreement today. That was stated at the beginning of the meeting. Second of all, the development agreement was sent to you over a month ago. I don't know if you chose to read it during that timeframe, but it was sent over a month What we're voting on today, everyone-
Again, if, if we, if you're not much-
What we're voting on today-
Wait a minute, hold on.
I got it, I got it. What we're voting on today is zoning. The development agreement still has to come before the Board of Commissioners at a later time to vote on the development agreement. So we still have language that has to be worked out. That is, at the end, the citizens have a right to be a part of that conversation. We are voting on zoning today. That is what we're voting on. So I just want to make that clear.
Is that correct, County Manager? We're just voting on zoning, not the agreement?
That is what we're voting on. So I just want to make that clear.
Is that correct, County Manager? We're just voting on zoning, not the agreement?
That is correct. The development agreement was not advertised for today.
Okay. That will be a separate advertisement?
Yes, ma'am.
In a separate meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Robinson?
I just want to ask the County Manager, she can just explain the difference to the constituents that have come today.
So the difference between the rezoning requests, which is what is being considered this evening, is the change of zoning for the property. The development agreement will outline any, and it's typical, you call them zoning conditions. But a development of this magnitude, because there are infrastructure improvements, there are other commitments, like we've heard public safety as one of those items. Those are things that we will outline. As part of the conceptual plan, there are specific things that are not, your single-family homes, it may be land for a fire station, that needs to be outlined in the development agreement, which pretty much states what the developer will be responsible for and the timeliness in which those items will be expected. And so today, the only thing that you all are acting on and the only thing that has been advertised is a public hearing for the rezoning of the property only. The development agreement will lay out the development regulations. And more particularly, because it went through a development of regional impact, those transportation infrastructure projects will be included in that development agreement.
Commissioner Wilson brought up, the stream buffers, wetland buffers, they, those are still applicable through Clayton County, Henry County, whoever decides to service the project, and there are state minimums and requirements. This is just the zoning piece of it. We have the same sort of codes within the ULDC. Again, they're going to have to go and get a development agreement with Clayton or Henry or both to, to control the water quality. So that's, the buffers will be there.
I'll go a little further. We cannot exempt ourselves from state law, no matter what this document says. So anything that's in here reflects either state law or increased standards in Clayton County or standards for Henry County. So I'd just like to make that clear as well.
If I could just finish. I just want to say, the question that I'm asking, so when we're talking about the buffer, when we're talking about Henry water, Clayton water, I want us to be very careful when we say if we've had conversations, they're not here, and that shows a good thing. I know why they're not here, right? But I do know that I'm kind of torn right now because conversation needs to be had when it comes to our water. And that's on Henry County's side and Clayton County's side, okay? Because today, I wouldn't vote for anything. And I'm just being transparent and honest. Because if we don't talk to see who's going to have the water, because Clayton County, they have to go before their board, right? Just as Kamal just said. We need to make sure that we have that in place. And when we're talking about these individuals, I suggest to each of, even our county staff, to bring them forward. This is a huge development between two counties, right? And if we don't have them to speak before the people, to clearly let everyone understand, that's why I asked the County Manager. People have taken the time out to come and want a true understanding about their property that they have invested in, right? So I want to make sure that we have everyone in place that it's going, this is going to be pertaining to before we take a vote. So I just want to make that clear, okay?
So that would take place when we do the development agreement announcement, I mean advertisement. That's not taking place tonight. That is, we are only dealing with zoning, correct?
Correct.
I just want to make sure.
That is correct. And Madam Chair, I think to Commissioner Robinson's point, we did extend an invitation to the water authority, but they are on a staff retreat and unable to attend tonight, today's meeting.
Okay. But they will, we will make sure that they are here when we get ready to do the development agreement.
Absolutely.
Because that's where it matters the most.
We will make sure that they're included, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Okay. Commissioner Anglin, I'm sorry.
First one, Kamal. The councilwoman from the city of McDonnell mentioned our comprehensive plan that was done. I just want to make sure, correction was, it was not done in 2025. When was that completed, please?
So our comprehensive plan was completed in October 30th of 2023.
So 2023, okay. Just want to make sure, so that's over a year old. Just want to make sure clarification is there. When looking at the home site itself, I mean, the site itself, the home site is preserved. I see that on there, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
For Henry County, it's one governor that we've had, okay?
Yes.
And you said there's also 150 acres that's preserved as well as green space, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, can I say one more thing about the home? I should have mentioned, there's also a family cemetery. So we're leaving about a 12-acre plot. It's not just the home that's being preserved, there's 12 acres that are being preserved.
Okay. And for folks that don't know, I mean, there's been a lot of governors that have spent a lot of time on that property and presidents of the United States. So that is a very historically significant piece of property in Henry County. With that being said, I just want to make sure we do understand that development agreement is part of this process. If folks see the work that I'm doing in District Three, I am very much in favor of master planned developments. The difference between this development and the ones that we currently have going on in District Three is that this one is brought to us by the developer. So with that, the master plans do give us a lot more teeth than what could possibly happen on that piece of property. So it gives additional rules and regulations. It also allows for all those community amenities that we continue to ask for. In this case, the developer is having to provide that. It is not coming from the county. So the difference between the ones that I'm working on in District Three and this one is the county is going to be held responsible for those in the master plan along with the developer. So there will be some shared expense there as that one takes place. So the developer's paying for these amenities that we have here. With that, we all talk about wanting to better control and plan the future of this county. Master plans allow us to do that. This is a 40-year plan. The plans that I'm doing are also 40 years. You're correct, a lot's going to change in 40 years. And if it's the 40 years I've been here, it's going to be a lot more growth. And that's because there's a lot of available land in Henry County. And unfortunately, families are selling their farms. And I don't have any control over that. I wish I did because I like cows. I think I like cows a lot more than people a lot of times. And especially in my district and growing up here my entire life. So I am very much in favor of master plans because it gives us the control. It helps us give folks what they have asked for certain amenities in those areas over a long period of time. And it helps us also better plan the infrastructure. So I want to say kudos to Kevin. This has been three years under work. Kudos to Patrick and y'all's group for working through this. I know it hasn't been 100% agreement. It's not supposed to. It's for what's better for the community as a whole as we are moving forward. My last comment, staff hears me say this all the time. No plan is a plan. It's just a failing one. And I do plans every day. That's all I do is manage money. So thank you for a plan. That's all my comments.
And I do want to leave you with that last part, what Commissioner Anglin stated is about planning. This is a master planned development. This is not the piecemeal. A lot of times, we gripe as commissioners, talking to each other about the number of zoning items we get because it's just piecemeal. There's no plan. There's just, you know, somebody sold their land over here, the developer bought it, and then a developer bought a piece of land a mile down the road, and there's nothing cohesive. And we, by law, we have to deal with it. We have to, we have to talk to everybody and we have to work through it. And we have to deal with their rights as property owners. State law protects property owners, and they have a lot of rights, and we have to deal with it. So what you've seen us do in the last probably just over a year, you've seen two master plans for District Three. You've seen an airport master plan and a moratorium in District Five, which is just south of this project. And now you see this master plan. So frequently, I get from residents, you all need to plan. Y'all don't plan anything. You don't plan anything. Like, this is literally what we're trying to do. Plan it so that we have the traffic infrastructure. The amount of money generated off of the impact fees for this one development will take care of the fire station, police station, all the road improvements. Like, this is an actual plan. So we are actively planning what is going to come in this area instead of just getting the piecemeal, 250 houses here, 400 houses here, and nothing looks alike, and there's just, there's just no plan. I frequently get requests from residents, we want better retail, we want fine dining. We want all of these things. And people tell me, I like to visit Avalon, I like to visit Trilith, I like to visit these other areas. This is what this development is going to bring. It's going to bring those types of areas along with the commercial that people have been asking for. I get requests every single day about the types of commercial development that this development is going to bring. And I know going in, you can't make 100% of the people happy. It's just, it's just not possible. But when I, when I get inundated with people saying, plan, we want you to plan. Commissioners, y'all need to do a better job of planning. So when we finally get to where somebody is actually willing to not only do a plan, but they're paying for it, we're not paying for it, they're paying for it. Like, I, in my mind, I'm like, you know, this is, this is what I will support. Like I said, I know some people will not be happy, and I understand that, and I'm okay with that. This is, this is a tough job. It's a tough job, but we signed up for it. I'm okay with that. But this is actually giving us an opportunity to plan a huge tract of land that I think in the long run will be beneficial for the county. You're talking about 25 to 40 years to build. So basically, you're talking about basically building like one new neighborhood a year, which is we do way more than that across the county. But we actually have say-so on how it's going to be planned, what it's going to look like, making sure that whichever water authority handles it, that they're going to give us the protections for our water. Frankly, maybe I shouldn't say it's like, I would be okay if Clayton County handled the water and sewer because it wouldn't take, take any of Henry County's water resources. We are a water-rich county. I know some people here, you know, like to spread that, you know, we're out of water in Henry County. We're not. We're one of the best water resource counties in the state of Georgia. But if we can protect it, hey, I'm all for that. So anyway, that being said, like I said, I know everybody may not be happy with some of the things that are presented. Like I said, there are even things of this project I don't like. I think there's too much multifamily. I still want to bring that number of multifamily down. I want to bring that rental cap down. The rental cap needs to come down to 10%. But with that being said, I think we are putting ourselves in a good position to actually plan the growth that is coming to Henry County. We have six lanes coming through Clayton County, coming up to this project. We need to make 1941 six lanes on the Henry County side. But there are a lot of things that we have in place that are going to be able, make us be able to do that, especially with the length of this project. So with that being said, I move to approve the rezoning with the conditions that the multifamily come down by 1,000 units and also that the rental cap go down to 10%.
Motion in a second. All in favor. All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Meeting adjourned.